Call a meeting of the Bay County Board of Commissioners to order Tuesday, June 18th, 2024, Commissioned Chambers. Roll call, please.
Niemec.
Here.
Benajak.
Present.
Millet, here. Herrick?
Here.
Radke?
Here.
Begic?
Here. Excuse Poyer. Let's do a moment of silence for Commissioner Poyer prior to the pledge and the invocation on the pledge. So if I could, everybody rise to recognize Commissioner Poyer. Invitation, please.
Lord, we come before you this afternoon asking once again that you bless the session of the County Commission. Be with this board this day and guide them so that the decisions made today and always will benefit every citizen of the community. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the minutes from 5:21, 24. Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda approval. I believe we have some changes to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to go out of order to move up the presentation of Saginaw Spirit Memorial Cup before the public input.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Couple other ones I would like to motion to remove Region 7 area agency of age and presentation under petitions communications.
I'll support it.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to add under new business, discussion on approval process for fulfilling Commissioners' vacancy.
I'll move it.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And motion to add under new business is election of officers sergeant-at-arms.
I'll move it.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
So we will, we've moved up the Memorial Cup presentation, so we will ask Mr. Goslin to come up and, let's, let's read the proclamation first, sorry. She can read the proclamation.
A resolution by Bay County Board of Commissioners on June 18th, 2024, whereas there has been a long standing tradition of hockey in Saginaw, starting with the Saginaw Year, Saginaw Hawks, and Saginaw Generals. And whereas in 2002 to 2023, Richard Dick Garber was able to obtain the franchise of the North Bay Centennials and bring the team to Saginaw, Michigan. And whereas Craig Goslin was hired as the president and managing partner of the team in 2002, and since then has been able to develop a very competitive team in the Ontario Hockey League West Division of the Western Conference of the Ontario Hockey League, which is one of the major junior leagues of the Canadian Hockey League. And whereas the major championship of the Canadian Hockey League is the Memorial Cup, which is played by the winner of the three divisions in the Canadian Hockey League and the host team. And whereas the Memorial Cup is usually played in a Canadian host city, except for a few occasions in the Northwest United States. And whereas Dick Garber and Craig Goslin were successful in making a bid for the Memorial Cup to be played in Saginaw, Michigan. And whereas the Saginaw Spirit Hockey Team, after 10 days of competition, including five hockey games, was successful in winning the Memorial Cup, therefore be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and Bay County Executive James Barcia recognize the achievement of a well, very well organized Memorial Cup that brought many visitors to Saginaw and the surrounding area headed by Dick Garber and Craig Goslin. Be it further resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and Bay County Executive James Barcia recognize the achievement of the Saginaw Spirit Hockey Team headed by General Manager Dave Drinkhill and head coach Chris Lazary.
Need a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now you can come out. All right. She had to leave somewhere.
Vot.
Thank you. Here's the resolution. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. If you have any words to say?
Yeah, we're so grateful. That's the word. We just hosted together a major international event. And everywhere throughout North America, our region is on the map. And it was, it was an incredible amount of visitors that came in and said wow to our region. And one of the things we did in the bid, just so you're aware how important Bay County was in our bid, there was three, there was four parts of the bid. There was hockey operations, you had to have a good hockey team coming back because the host team, there's three leagues in the Canadian Hockey League. There's the Western Hockey League, the Quebec Major Junior, and the Ontario Hockey League. The champions of those three leagues compete for the Memorial Cup championship. The fourth team is the host team. So the host team bids on it about 22 months prior to the Memorial Cup where they're going to host. All right, so we bid on it 22 months earlier, and the site selection committee has to look at your roster and say that roster is going to be really good, and they're going to be good enough to compete against the league champions, if they're not the league champion. So the first part was hockey operations, we checked that box. The second one was the business operations. We have, without question, without any doubt, the best business operations in our league, I would say in sports. We have, we have great people in our region. A lot of that is because of our universities. Northwood, Saginaw Valley, Central Michigan, Delta, we have incredible amount of resources that come to us through the people that go to those schools and come into our program as interns. We promote them up through the, so that was, the part was business operations. The third part was the logistics, the local atmosphere that maybe that saw the fan fest, all those things that go into that. We put that into the bid. And the fourth part is way Bay County come in.
You have five minutes to speak.
And that was the, the local atmosphere and the logistics of, of where people were going
Want to speak for less, that's okay.
to go, what they were going to do when they were here in our region.
We need a motion, oh yeah, we need a motion to go back into the regular order, the agenda.
And certainly, the Bay County River, Bay City Riverfront was a big winner in all this,
So move.
Support.
Decision?
We actually need a motion to approve the agenda.
certainly, and we hopefully, hopefully this is going to continue to be a winner for Bay
We approved all.
Yes, right, we have to approve the agenda, okay.
City and for Bay County for years to come because a number of people came down here,
As amended. So we need a motion for that.
enjoyed what's happened here in Bay County.
We did that.
People hadn't been for a long time, came back and they just said, wow, that, that region,
Okay, support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
that city's really got it going.
Okay.
So I'm proud to be from Bay City, this is my hometown.
So citizens input, you have five minutes or less to speak, and you can state your name
I grew up about 12 blocks from here, Johnson Street next to Central High School.
if you wish to sign the book, you can, you don't have to, so.
And I was, Jim Barcia, I was a big fan of Jim, and in fact, I, I helped him get elected
Mr. Chair.
I have a County Commissioner who was asked to speak as a public citizen.
Hi, my name is Benajak, I'm of Bay County, and I want to give a statement.
the first time, and I got, I actually got thrown out of the precinct where he was, because I didn't know, I was too close, I guess, and they threw me out, and I found my way back in. All right, so that's a true story. And but anyways, it's, it's, we're so grateful. And the Memorial Cup is, is the championship, you're all Memorial Cup champions.
I am very deeply disturbed and outraged by the recent statements made by Doug Stone during
And that's what's cool, is for a lifetime, our community, our region is a World Cup champion.
a public meeting, where he referred to members of our community in dehumanitizing and derogatory
And all I can say on behalf of Dick Garber and all of us with Saginaw Spirit, thank you.
Thank you.
terms. His remarks about the homeless population were not only disrespectful, but also contrary to the values we as public officials must hold. Doug Stone's call for increased discrimination against the homeless population is utterly unacceptable. Public libraries are sanctuaries of knowledge and community resources for all individuals, regardless of their housing status. Denying access based on a person's economic situation is both morally and legally indefensible. Moreover, suggesting that library cards should only be mailed to prevent transit individuals from accessing library services is a blatant attempt to exclude and marginalized vulnerable populations. This approach is not only discriminatory, but also undermines the very purpose of public libraries as accessible and welcoming spaces for all members of our community. In light of these reprehensible statements, I am calling for the immediate resignation of Doug Stone from his official position. We cannot allow someone who advocates for discrimination and exclusion to remain in a positive and a position of authority and influence. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Thank you. My name is Rudy Howard. I live at 1610 Sixth Street here in the city, and I rise as first a citizen and second as a Christian. The libraries of America are and must ever remain the home of free and inquiring minds. To them, our citizens of all ages and races, of all creeds and persuasions, must be able to turn in clear confidence that they can freely seek the whole truth, unvarnished by fashion and uncompromised by expediency. Republican President Dwight D. Eisenhower. There was a time certain things went beyond politics in our communities, and we need to get back to that. Libraries have always been the incubator of democracy. You are more than commissioners, you are stewards of democracy first and foremost. It is your job to make these decisions to ensure that the people that do our work do it on behalf of everybody. Not those who simply have large houses on Center Avenue, but those that don't have one. Secondly, I rise as a Christian. For those of you that prayed during the invocation, whomever you choose to pray to, ask yourself before you take a vote, what would that individual expect of you? Thank you.
We have a young presenter.
I'll go first, forum. Chairman Begic, Executive Barcia, and esteemed members of the Commission and staff, I want to sincerely thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak today. My name is Caitlin Day, and I live at 1911 Center Ave in the city of Bay City. I've prepared my remarks to try to stay within time here. After you look around that absolutely packed Commissioned Chambers today, you'll see that I'm joined by community advocates and activists, nonprofit leaders, private business owners, and perhaps most importantly, my kids are here. We're here today to speak about our favorite place, the library. We are your constituents, but we're also proud library card holders. So my oldest here, Lincoln, is about to turn eight next month, and we have been frequent flyers at the children's library ever since he was a baby. We're there at least once a week right now, playing, checking out all a variety of materials, including books, board games, STEM kits, and most recently themed backpack kits that have books and board games and toys that are all matching in theme. I believe that the library is a great equalizer where everyone can come together, access resources, and find fellowship within their community. Regardless of your race, gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic class, or housing status, you can come into the public library to access educational resources, technology, entertainment, or simply find a cool place to sit in these 90-degree days. When we look around, around the library, we're proud to see so much diversity. Last June, this Commission made an appointment to this library board. The trustee that was appointed at that time has since made remarks in board meeting advocating to, and I quote from the meeting, "Munis, do more to discriminate against the homeless." And I asked this Commission, when has discriminating more ever been on the right side of history? What this appointed trustee is advocating for isn't just illegal here in the state of Michigan. I don't feel it represents the beliefs or wants of our community who actually uses the library. According to a presentation I recently received from the McKinney-Vento Program, Bay County has over 300 homeless children. When we talk about prohibiting access from entry based on housing status, we're also talking about 300 Bay County children. A candidate that you will vote on today, Ms. Morgan Jackson, has shared these troubling sentiments advocating for discrimination of unhoused persons. I urge you to represent the best interest of this community today and maintain the integrity of the library by reappointing Paul Travis. Mr. Travis has been a strong and fair leader for the library and has demonstrated exemplary fiscal management while maintaining an irrefutably positive reputation within this community. He brings years of experience to the role and has important perspectives to share as a former public education teacher and principal. What happens with this vote is important, and your constituents are watching today. We appreciate your consideration and your vote to reappoint Mr. Travis to the library board. Thank you. And now I'm going to turn it over to the coolest kid in the room.
Hi, my name is Lincoln Day. I live on Center Ave, 1911, and I love that the library is a place for everybody. So that's why I think Mr. Travis should be reelected. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, hard to follow it up, but we got a whole lot.
Oh, man, how do I follow that? Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Amy Haroff, and I've lived in Franklin, West Township in Bay County for 22 years. I am a faithful library patron, using many of the services that are offered through our library, physical book borrowing, listening to audiobooks through Hoopla, using the meeting rooms at WART, attending author events, and even though my kids are 22, 19, and 19, they still want to see the reindeer every Christmas. So a year ago, I stood in front of you as a candidate for the Bay County Library Board. At that time, you chose to appoint Doug Stone, and since his appointment, I've been troubled by the discriminatory statements that he's made about the unhoused people in our community. You can see his thoughts on the matter highlighted in the M Live News article published yesterday. You've got another library appointment before you today. In preparation, I went back and reviewed the requirements for the position. Board members are responsible to serve as connecting links between the library and the community, and to be an advocate for the library. The American Library Association ethics statement, which this board adheres to, states that board members must distinguish clearly in their actions and statements between personal philosophies and attitudes and those of the institution, acknowledging the formal position of the board even if they personally disagree. I'm especially concerned with candidate Morgan Jackson. I do not know Ms. Jackson personally, but I've read her views of the library board on Facebook, which are very concerning to me, since it's a public forum and out there for everyone to see. She stated that the word on the street is that the library spends the crap out of your money on stupid expletive. The current board has very liberal spenders who drop thousands on dumb expletive. She went on to disparage unhoused people, saying they need to stay out of the library. One of the board members said, we can't discriminate against them. Bull expletive. You can. She just summed up her post by saying, my goal, if I join any group, is not to care about anybody's feelings or offending anyone. Expletive. I may even send out a couple of mean tweets. In my opinion, this is not a person who is committed to being a link between the library and the community, or who understands the requirements of this board position. I urge you to vote for Paul Travis to be reappointed. Mr. Travis has been a board member in good standing, serving for several years as chairman. He's a retired educator and understands the importance of having a library system that serves our entire community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Carrie Strokerch, and I reside at 801 Frost Drive in Bangor Township, also Bay City, but we're special. I have prepared some remarks regarding our library district appointments to the library board of trustees and my concerns. To lay some groundwork, I'm proud to be a past president of the Rotary Club of Bay City, the Junior League of the Great Lakes Bay Region, and the Dow Bay Area Family YMCA Board of Directors. I serve on the board of the Michigan State Council of Junior Leagues and the State Public Affairs Committee representing over 2,000 members across the state of Michigan. I am a past director of a women's shelter, a domestic violence victim's advocate, and I'm a court-appointed special advocate volunteer, a business owner in both Michigan and Florida. I list these to provide reference to the scope of my concerns and to lend credibility to my knowledge on the issues I would like to raise. The Bay County library system is a true gem in our communities throughout Bay County. My son and I have treasured our time visiting before he could even read, and enjoy attending events like STEM Day, summer reading parties, and even the reindeer regardless of the cold every year. He's 12. He's not going to grow out of it. Upon hearing of the potential appointments to the board this evening, I reviewed the most recent four months of minutes of the library board of trustees. First, I would like to give kudos to Ms. Burns and Mr. Ayala for their stewardship of the library and their transparency to the library board of trustees. We are truly fortunate to have them at the helm. My concerns stem from some statements made by a current trustee, and one that is echoed by a current board appointment nominee. My first concern is that Mr. Stone states that he is not in possession and/or familiar with the Bay County District Library bylaws. He asked for them at the last meeting. These bylaws are readily available on the district website and are the governing document that the board of trustees should be using to guide their collective actions. He also stated that he was in need of Robert's Rules of Order, the guiding process per the bylaws. This reference is available at every Bay County public library in the reference section. Bay City and Bay County are currently undergoing the liquidation of a beloved nonprofit, partially due to an unengaged and uninformed board of directors. I asked the Commission what qualifications it requires for appointees and what board training is provided for those appointed. My second concern is the statements made in the most recent meeting by Mr. Stone, and those echoed in a social media post that were shared. These statements were concerning limiting access to non-Bay County residents due to not paying taxes, but the primary concern was raised due to patrons being unhoused. Per the Michigan Public Library Trustee Manual, which I found on the Library of Michigan website, Michigan grants its citizens a constitutional right to access of library services. Article 8, Section 9 in the Constitution states, "The legislature shall provide for the establishment and support of public libraries which shall be available to all residents of the state under regulations adopted by the governing bodies thereof." This does not mean that the trustees as a governing body cannot make policies and requirements, but they should consider the following when doing so. Does the policy comply with current statutes? Is the policy reasonable, including reasonable penalties? Could there be discriminatory application to the policy? And is the policy measurable? These four items are provided by the Library of Michigan and are titled, "The Four Tests for a Legally Enforceable Library Policy." Item 3 provides a timely example of not allowing sleeping, and that it may be enforced against homeless patrons but not against other patrons who drift off while reading in a comfy chair or in the air conditioning. Our library district does currently have a no sleeping policy that I would encourage you, the Commissioners, to ask the board of trustees to reconsider and have them reviewed by legal counsel. I circle back to my original question of what training and education is provided to trustees once appointed to ensure that they are compliant with the statutes in the state constitution, which upon their appointment, they take an oath to uphold. The last concern I would like to address is the policy of checking patrons' residency for entry to the libraries. It not only violates the state constitution, but also discriminates against women and children residing at local domestic violence shelters, or those utilizing the protection of their address via the Address Confidentiality Act.
One minute left.
Thank you. Women and children utilizing the services of domestic violence shelters or transitional housing are considered homeless, and are often not allowed to use the temporary housing address on their identifying documents. As a member of the Junior League of the state of Michigan, I advocated for the passage of the Address Confidentiality Program, and am trained as a volunteer and assistance in that matter. The ACP was created to conceal the addresses of victims of violence or intimidation, or those being physically harmed from being located by their perpetrators through public records. It provides a designated proxy address to use on all documentation that serves as a forwarding service. Asking a patron to reveal their actual address simply to enter the library can put that in at danger in addition to violating Section 8, Article 9 of the Michigan Constitution. It is for these concerns that I encourage the board of Commissioners to appoint Mr. Paul Travis to the library board of trustees for a second term. Mr. Travis is a wonderful representation of our community, demonstrated through his service to our community and the service of his family in our region.
Good afternoon, members of the Bay County Commission. My name is Julie Barcia, and I'm a Pinconning resident. I stand before you today despite my discomfort with public speaking because I believe it is crucial to speak out against injustice and discrimination in our community. Recently, there have been troubling comments made advocating for discrimination against homeless individuals accessing our public library. As a member of this community, I am deeply disappointed by these sentiments, especially from individuals who hold or seek positions of influence such as Bay County Library Board. Our public library should be a sanctuary for all residents regardless of their background or circumstances. It is a place where everyone should feel safe, welcomed, and valued. Denying access to homeless individuals contradicts these fundamental principles of inclusivity and compassion. It is our duty as a community members to stand up for those who may not have a voice, to advocate for fairness and equality, and to ensure that all residents of Bay County feel respected and embraced. Discrimination has no place in our community, and we must actively work to create an environment where every individual feels celebrated and supported. Thank you for allowing me to express my concerns. I urge the Commission to consider these values when making decisions that affect the community and its members. Together, we can uphold the principles of fairness and ensure that Bay County remains a place where everyone is valued and welcomed.
Good afternoon, County Commissioners. My name is Amelia Gutierrez, and I am here today representing Do All Inc., where I serve as president and CEO. Our nonprofit is dedicated to empowering individuals living with disabilities and those facing barriers, enhancing inclusive opportunities for employment and community engagement. I stand before you to emphasize the critical importance of equal access to our local libraries for all members of our community. For the individuals that Do All Inc. serves, the library is not just a place to borrow books, it is a lifeline. It is a place where clients can access the internet to find job postings, create resumes, take part in community events and workshops, connect with their support network and other helping professionals, all while in a safe and integrated community environment regardless of their housing status. I would ask you to please, just for a moment, imagine the impact if these individuals were denied access to the library based on their housing status, disability, mental health diagnosis, or other factors. It would mean cutting off a vital resource that helps folks navigate the challenges they face while they strive for independence and self-sufficiency. It would be sending people further into the shadows, and it would send a message loud and clear that we only value certain people in our community. Housing status should never dictate one's ability to seek employment opportunities or access educational resources. Disability should never prevent somebody from utilizing essential services and connecting with their community. And mental health diagnoses should never isolate individuals from the support and resources that libraries do provide. Our libraries must be places of inclusivity where every person, regardless of their circumstances, feels welcomed and empowered to pursue their goals. Ensuring equal access to libraries is not just a matter of fairness, it's a matter of human dignity and community solidarity. I implore you to fight actively against and oppose discrimination of any kind in our library and in our greater community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Paul Travis here, 703 South Arbor in Bay City. Executive Barcia, Chairman Begic, and trustees. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to speak on behalf of myself toward getting a reappointment. This, this week, and I think just a couple days ago, I ran into one of our wonderful staff members at the library who oversees our children's programs, which are, I never imagined how many there were till I got the monthly reports from our excellent library managers. And she was telling me the overwhelming response for the summer reading program. And what a, what a great thing. As, as a retired elementary principal, previous to that teacher, the fact that we have kids in this world of all the iPhones and iPads, we still have kids reading. It's pretty exciting. And along with that, it reminded me of when I was a kid on the west side, riding my bike over to Sage Library. And my wife has a similar experience as of a young west sider. And then we took our children to that same library because we lived over there, and, and they went to Storytime and puppet activities and whatever, all of them that we now have enforced, more of them than we ever had before. And I'm just so excited to be part of that. And, and the leadership amongst our staff is just amazing, you know, from Trish and, and Kevin, our director and assistant. It's just a remarkable organization. And I, I just hope that you give me a chance to continue my role as a trustee on the library board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments? And she was telling me the overwhelming response for the summer reading program. And what a great thing. As a retired elementary principal, previous to that teacher, the fact that we have kids in this world of all the iPhones and iPads, we still have kids reading. It's pretty exciting. And along with that, it reminded me of when I was a kid on the West Side, riding my bike over to Sage Library. And my wife has a similar experience as of a young West Sider. And then we took our children to that same library because we lived over there. And they went to Storytime and puppet activities and whatever, all of them that we now have enforced, more of them than we ever had before. And I'm just so excited to be part of that. And the leadership amongst our staff is just amazing, you know, from Trish and Kevin, our director and assistant. It's just a remarkable organization. And I just hope that you give me a chance to continue my role as a trustee on the library board. Thank you.
Any more public comments?
My name's Morgan Jackson and this is my first time ever doing anything like this. And wow, has it been a learning experience. Let me tell you from, you know, I have this saying, and please, you know, don't take it the wrong way, but everybody has an opinion, you know? Everybody has a butthole, so everybody has an opinion. It's how you react to those opinions. That's what's great about America. Everybody has a different opinion, but it's how you handle it. And first off, I would love to say, I love the library. I was there today. I was telling this woman today about the great program, how they gave with lunch today, they gave out books. I have absolutely amazing things to say about every children's program that the library has. So please don't get me wrong and think I'm against anything. Now, to the homeless people, the homeless people have every right to the library, 100% agree on that. They can be there looking for jobs, using the computer to apply for jobs, finding knowledge in whatever they need to do. What I had a concern with as a parent and based off what I had read from Doug Stone is people, not just homeless, any adult, washing themselves in a public bathroom that kids can go into. So as far as anything about me hating the homeless, that is 100% not true, taken out of context. I'm just a mom and I watch what goes on in the city commission and how everybody fights and nobody gets along and it's either a red team or a blue team and you have to be on each team or you just don't count. And you know what? I'm not that person. I'm just here for some common sense. I'm here to sit back and watch from both sides what's going on because I think both sides honestly have some issues. So that's it. I'm just Morgan Jackson. I'm just here to talk for the normies and thank you for your time and having me. I told my kids today that you're never too old to try something new and to learn something new and here I am at 43 doing this. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Jim knows me forever. He knows I'd have to get up. My name is Margaret Falana and I live at 890 North York Drive, Apartment 1. Address is Essexville, but it's really in Hampton Township. Go figure that. And I vote for Bay City schools. So anyway, I'm grandma and I've never done this either, honey. You're 43, I'm going to be 73, so you know, never too old. When I first moved to Bay City after I graduated from Saginaw Valley, the first thing I did other than go to McDonald's was to find the nearest library. Where I lived, it was Sage Library. And I was like, oh, look at this place. Wow, it was amazing. And I spent some time in there, quite a bit, when I lived on the West Side. Then, after I got married and we moved to the South End, I loved the South End Library. Cried when it closed. I studied in there because I was going to college, even after college, after graduation. I studied in there. I was able to reach things with the computer. I was a computer literate, but there were people that helped. And then I had a boy and he spent time in that library, oodles of time, because I would take him and say, what do you want to do, man? Go to the library, go to the library. What do you want to get? Sports? Anything about sports? And he read everything he could. His children have the big library and they would, when they were little, beg to go there. Pay me the library, Grandma. Can we go to the library today, Grandma? Yes, we can go to the library. Can I get this many books? Well, how many books do you think you can read in a week or two? They'd tell me, and by golly, they would. They'd come home with seven books and bring seven books back and get seven more. That's great. And when I heard the number, 300 children that are unhoused, my heart's a dropping. I'm a former educator and to think that these kids might have to wash up in the bathroom? Thank you, Bay City Library, for not kicking them out because now they can get a little bit clean. Thank you for brushing their teeth. When you're unhoused, you don't have those things, but coming to a public place, it's okay. I mean, they disinfect the bathrooms all the time. It's not a big deal. We can make it a big deal if we want. And to discriminate against the unhoused, I want you to look around this room. At some point, one of us might be unhoused. Things happen in our lives that are unexpected. Illness, divorce, death, I mean catastrophic accidents, and then we'd have no way to make money. I'm not going to get into the politics, but if like Social Security and Medicare Medicaid left, what are the older people supposed to do if that's what they live on? And they're unhoused, so they're discriminated against. And I'm talking about somebody, myself right now, who's 73, that those are my worries. Am I going to come in the library and be told, oh, you can't get a book? You don't have a permanent address. But I'll give them Jim Barsha's address. Just so I could have one, you know? But it's very important that, what I loved about Bay City when I moved here, it was the acceptance of absolutely everybody. It didn't matter what color your skin was, what religion you were, whether you were in the Pride.
One minute left.
Community? Okay. Thank you. And it just, I hope that the library will appoint someone like Mr. Travis who's interested and he's a former educator. Can you imagine everything he can bring to the table? Sounds like a whole lot more than what's there right now. Thank you.
Did you meet it?
Hi, everyone. My name is Alex Poyer. I'm Dennis Poyer's grandson. I just wanted to take a moment to come up here and thank every one of you for the time you guys spent with him. He really cherished serving on this commission. And I also want to thank everybody for your community support and everything that you guys have done for him in the last year that he's served with you guys. He really cherished it. So thank you again.
Any more public comments? Any more public comments? Any more public comment? Public comment is closed. We do have public comment at the end. Somebody wants to stay around, might be a little while, but... We have a presentation by Chris Pinter, Chief Executive Officer, Bay Air and Air Health.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to give you a little bit of background. I haven't been over to the county to give an update in a while and Mr. Herrick emails me at least once a week, wants to know what's going on with mental health, so asked me to come and give a report. I told him I won't be as comprehensive as Mr. Barsha, but I'll do the best I can. So a couple of things. Ever since the public health emergency started phasing out back in late 2022, we've seen probably a 50% increase in service demand the last two years. That's incredible. We're now past our pre-COVID service requests and a lot of that has been inpatient. I would say probably we spend 40% more now on inpatient than we did back in 2019. We also have a lot of demand now for outpatient, so we have, again, Mr. Barsha will be glad to know this, we have repurposed the Mulholland Campus that was purchased by the county and it was a grant arranged by the county and by Bay Medical Center in 1975. We're returning, we're doing outpatient therapy there again, so came full circle. Dr. Kimmon was right the whole time, 50 years ago. So we've added some groups, we've tried to get more people in, we're recognizing, there's a lot more awareness since COVID of the importance of social connections and of mental health wellness in the general community, which is great. So we're really, rather than complaining and putting up the sorry we're closed sign up, which we can't do, we've been trying to get people into engagement groups and groups around emotional regulation and different things that the general public is not aware of post-COVID, that is a mental health issue, that's a wellness issue. 15 years ago, we didn't have, now people didn't have insurance. So you had mental health providers, but a lot of people didn't have insurance. Now, most people have some kind of insurance, so the problem is, is we don't have enough mental health providers in Michigan because we lost so much population the last 15 years since 2008. A lot of the young folks left who might have went into counseling or, you know, been an extender or things like that. So we're trying to kind of find ways through telehealth and other things to meet the need of Bay County at our agency and work with our other partners. We have really good partners, including Do All, Amelia's from, that help us with our mission. So we've added more services for that. We're also, the county helped us last fall because we had to convert the Bay Valley Home. The county owns that facility and with help from Parks and Recreation and from Jim and from County Council, we switched that over to a new provider. So we have a new provider providing that. We were able to absorb nine vacancies over our whole system just because unfortunately, we work with people the most severely disabled, they had a higher attrition rate during COVID because they're more physically vulnerable. So we had opportunities to try to get some of that consolidated and provide more services to the well population now that's coming in and asking for help. So we did appreciate the county doing that. We're hoping in July or August, we will have a crisis residential home open at the old Union Home, which is over in Bangor Township. That will give us a place to move some of these inpatient service requests because a lot of them are not people typically served by Bay Air and Air or that have Medicaid. They're people with commercial insurance that can't find a provider. So we're hoping that will become more of an option because you don't want them to go in the hospital system if you can avoid it. It just becomes a little too, it can become challenging to people who are not used to in that, being in that system. We also are looking at possibly expanding pediatric inpatient beds in Bay County. There's some grant money made available through the state budget a few years ago by Representative Beeson and we're meeting with the McLaren CEO next week. We're trying to see if McLaren would commit to adding children's beds on the Mulholland Campus because we really need them. We're getting more and more and more requests and we're getting more and more kids. You guys probably read about it in the paper, sitting in ERs or sitting for weeks to get a children's inpatient placement because there's just not enough hospital capacity in Michigan. The state is adding help capacity at their old Hawthorne Hospital, but it's going to be years before that's ready. So we're looking at maybe adding some beds here in Bay County and maybe even in Saginaw because Health Source has adolescent beds. And so hopefully that'll help us with some of the demand. So that's what we're seeing. A lot of people coming in, we're trying to scramble to find ways to get people in and get them into service and keep the bills paid and the lights on. So for today, I'm asking you to consider a resolution because my board is at the point to, we have reached a point with our relationship with the state of Michigan, not the administration, not the legislature, but with the state of Michigan in terms of our mental health services. And they have, they have taken an adversarial position with us the last four or five years. It's very different than what we've seen in the previous 37 years that I've been involved in community mental health. And I worked for Governor Engler, okay? And he was tough. He was tough. He played hardball, but he respected the process. He respected the legislature, he respected the counties. We could work with him at the county level on those things. The department has taken a position now that the counties, who have been partners for 61 years with the state in providing a public mental health system, that's a safety net system for people who would have been in Carroll Regional Center, would have been in Traverse City State Hospital, would have been in Mount Pleasant, would have been in Kalamazoo. The state and counties developed this mental health program to serve those people. That's why the unit was built back in '77, was to provide a local unit available so we didn't have to send people to Carroll, we didn't have to warehouse people, we could provide treatment in the community and get them back to their families. That's been our policy for, like I said, since '63 when Bay County, one of the first nine counties in Michigan to become, create a county mental health program. Our friends at the Department of Health and Human Services have decided that that's actually, that the counties actually have a pecuniary interest in providing those services, that there's some kind of financial gain to Bay County for all these mental health services we provide to the people most in need. And despite the fact that, A, as a governmental entity, we cannot make a profit, we can't mark up costs, we have to accept them with their ability to pay. If they don't pay their services, I can't kick them out like any other commercial provider could do. I can never charge more than the actual cost of the service, I can't mark it up. I'm limited by state law that we are a sliding scale, community-based, you know, safety net provider. We're not a private interest. We're not in business to make a profit. We can't make a profit. It would be inappropriate for us. There are plenty of agencies that can do healthcare operations and make a profit. The county doesn't have to be one of those. We're serving the people who are most in need, who have the least resources, right? So debates about the size of the system and how much money goes into it, those are valid debates at the legislative level. I take issue with the fact that I'm working with unelected bureaucrats in the department who don't answer to anybody. And they just decide this is how it's going to be. They've never worked with a person with a disability. They sure haven't sat down and listened to public comment from the folks who gave comment today. If they did, they would change their position. They would find out that it's most important at the end of the day for these services to be accountable to the people we serve. That's the most important. If they're not, there's no sense having community-based service. So I'm asking the Commission, and they're tired of me bringing resolutions to them, but they've been very patient on both sides of the aisle over the years, they've been very patient with us. And I'm asking you to consider this resolution. This would be asking the Bay County Board to oppose some regulatory changes the department wants to make. I tried to list these based on the state law citations that I believe that make the argument for why this is not good for Bay County and not good for Bay Air and Air Community Mental Health. I would ask you to consider passing this and not to put any pressure on you. Air and Air County passed it last Tuesday. So if you guys don't pass it, I have to move to Air and Air County.
Any questions?
I just want to point out a few things. You know, local control was a big issue about the state taking over. I hear things about Eagle doing things without any governmental oversight. So I see a lot of things drifting that way, that the state has taken over our control of things and I don't think we should allow that to happen, so I'm supporting it.
I just want to thank you, Chris, for your presentation. See, yeah, we have seen, I think, would you agree, a spike in the need for and demand for mental health services?
Yes.
And I know I read as much as I can. Do you think it was exacerbated by the pandemic?
Yes.
Especially the isolation?
Yep.
Some of the students and some of the other folks and maybe even working remotely and not interacting with their peers and their colleagues?
Yep.
Could you?
I do.
Maybe share with us why it seems to have increased recently?
Yeah, what was interesting about it was there, when there was a flat, demand kind of started to erode during COVID because, A, we're in a hospital. Where did they tell you not to go to an ER to catch the virus? They told you, don't go to the hospital. And the hospitals were overrun with people who were sick with respiratory problems, so they didn't, you know, so there was a natural dampening effect on, oh, they're in that hospital. Yeah, I think I'll go somewhere else this week. But over time, I think that people are more educated about wellness now and about mental health wellness in particular, and I think that's helped. Regardless of how they got educated, whether it was just through the pandemic or through other things, more people are coming in, asking for help with engagement and help with dealing with trauma. Trauma is another thing that 10 years ago, the general public didn't talk about trauma. I mean, you knew what trauma was, but not to the degree of how it affects veterans, how it affects domestic violence survivors, how it affects children who grow up in abusive situations. There's more of an understanding now of the effects of trauma and that they're lifelong because they have a rewiring effect on your neurological system even if you don't know it. So I think all that, if there's any silver lining from COVID, is people are more aware, I believe, of what mental health services can help anybody. And that's a good thing because it makes it less of a stigma for people with disabilities.
So we do need a motion. They have the resolution and receive opposing this.
I'll move it. Support.
Any more discussion?
Is this a motion to receive?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. That's what we can do.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Honorable Joseph Sheeran, Chief Judge, reappointment of Joy Butler to the Bay County Jury Commission for a six-year term.
Mr. Chair? Did she even make appointment? I have a question. Did we do all three of those in one motion?
It's, I guess, okay, so there was a presentation, there's a letter, and then there's a resolution. So I guess the first two, we need to receive, the first two.
We did.
Okay. Then you have to, that's the receive. The last one is to move the resolution.
And then the last one is to make the resolution, yes.
Okay. Do we do that?
Yes. Do that now.
Then I'll move. I'll move to receive.
I move to receive. You're moving.
I'm moving the resolution.
I'll support it.
Okay. We got it. Before Amber corrects us again.
We got two receives and a resolution.
Correct.
So any more discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and received carries. Opposed, motion carries and received carries.
Just for clarification, the motion to receive is unquote B, A, and B. Correct?
A, I receive.
And then the motion to move the resolution is for C.
With C, correct.
Thank you.
Got it. All right. So the reappointment of Joy Butler to the Bay County Jury Commission for a six-year term.
Someone.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. City of Bay City, notification of appointment of Brent Runner as representative for the City of Bay City to the Bay County Land Bank Authority.
We'll receive. Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Golden Horizons Fiscal Year 2025 Funding Application to Region Seven Area Agency on Aging, received submission. And Discuss the Board Would Like to Submit Comments to the Region Seven Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors Regarding Submission. On the resolution.
I'll move to receive it.
Yeah.
I'll support it.
So if anybody has a comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I just kind of commented, I know people who've used Golden Horizons with their family members.
Yep.
You know, it's over on Broadway and Frema. And, you know, it's been really good for a lot of people because sometimes people are caring for the elderly adults, you know, the elderly adults are caring for elderly, elderly adults, you know? And it gives them a place to go all day and they see other people and they get to do some things. So it's really a great lifeline, you know, for a lot of people. And they do a great job over there. Just make sure we never lose them because Peggy does a great job with all those people, with little, little kids all the way up to them, people.
Broad spectrum. I agree, reading, reading through the thing about dementia, I remember using my mom, all the faces that she went through, you know, should be a kind, considerate person to being, you know, mean and, you know, changing your personality. It was really, it's really hard to see your loved one go through that, that process. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Question, Mr. Chair, no comments, submit to Region Seven with regards to submission.
Correct.
Yep. Submit comments.
Well, Tom had a comment.
Listen, I want to count that as a comment, you can, but.
Specifically whether or not you want to submit anything to Region Seven.
No.
Yeah.
No.
We're good.
Okay, so that passes. Application for appointment to Bay County Library Board, one five-year term. Receive the applicants and then make the appointment. So motion to receive the applicants would be our.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we've received, now we'll make the appointment. We'll ask the temporary sergeant-at-arms. We'll do a roll call. Roll call votes.
Paul Travis.
Bigick?
Paul Travis.
Mallett?
Travis.
Herrick?
Travis.
Brad Key?
Travis.
Nieman?
Travis.
So six for Travis, zero for Jim.
Okay. We have. Motion to appoint Paul Travis to the Library Board.
I move.
Support. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Reports, resolutions of committees. We have the committee, the whole, Commissioner Benajak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution number 2024-88, placement of a full millage question on November 2024 ballot. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-89, National Child Welfare Law Conference 2024 travel request. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? This is funded by grants and others, so it's covered. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-90, Agreement with Computer Systems Incorporated, SCI Equity Protect. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-91, Acceptance of MDArd and Gerstacker Grant. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-92, Lynnwood Civic Access Site Award Funding. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? I don't see Laura Ogar here, but she's put a lot of time and work into this. And so that's, thank her.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Laura did take a break this week and she's vacationing in northern Michigan. But, yeah, we were well received last Wednesday by the Lynnwood Civic Improvement Club. I know Tim has worked as well on that project for a long time. And we really appreciate where we're at, where the steel is ordered for the seawall. And hopefully construction will begin soon. We still have a little, one last issue, and that's the Facebook. They come up with $50,000. If we raise 25, MEVC will match it with 25. And so even at that meeting, we had several pledges to help us get toward that goal.
Yep.
Yes. Mr. Chair, Mr. Barsha, we've, you know, we've been working on this for 20 years. I grew up in Lynnwood. And back in 65, 66, my parents used to take us from St. Anne's Church every Sunday right till the end of Lynnwood Beach to see the beach. Okay, that's when it was a beach. Now, for 20 years of hard work with the Lynnwood Civic Site people, members, and this Bay County, especially Laurel, it's coming to fruition. It's basically, it's ready to go. The permits have been pulled, been signed off by the DNR, just waiting for the steel to come in, and they're going to start.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-93, placement of mosquito-controlled millage question on November 2, 2024 ballot. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-94, Animal Control Officer Physician, hired at a one-year rate. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-95, Payables. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-96, Fieldwell LLC Software Contract. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We had the cancellation of the June 11 meeting, so I'm going to ask Commissioner Herrick to do the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution number 2024-97, reports to the county executive for May. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-98, Budget Adjustment of $30,000 for a Search and Rescue Operation. Equipment, maintenance. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? Sheriff, do you like the speed?
It's all right. Just a minute of time.
He couldn't quite get out the door.
Tell us what you're going to use the money for.
It's just with the Coast Guard and their search and rescue going away, it's putting a little bit more on, well, a lot more on the Sheriff Department of Search and Rescue. So it's just some equipment we need for life jackets, dry suits, and we're trying to get some more AEDs for the patrol for out on the water.
Coast Guard has left us somewhat.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Any questions, Sheriff? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-99, the budget adjustment of $10,000 for a toxicologist, NMS Labs. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-100, Part-Time Emergency Relief Coordinator, hired at a two-year rate of $18.58 an hour. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-101, concurrence with the county executive's recommended reappointment of Brian Clayley to the Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works Workforce Development Board of Directors for Prosperity Region Five. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? I don't know if Brian is here, but we have a meeting next Monday. He's been on the board, so next Monday at 3:30 up in Saginaw. So she's listening in. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That is all, Mr. Chairman, from the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. County Executive, Mr. Barsha.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's been a good meeting this afternoon. I just want to mention that I'm very proud to announce that Beth Urick, our Director of our Department on Aging, our 60 and better population here in Bay County, which is served so well by her and her team in the department, has been appointed to the State Advisory Council on Aging. And that holds up to five annual meetings per year, and members participate on one of four work groups to advise and counsel the Commission on Services of the Aging in Lansing in developing state policy on a plethora of issues affecting our senior population statewide. So I want to say, Beth, congratulations on your appointment. Understand it was unanimous. And I know having another voice at the state level advocating for our retired and senior population in Bay County and throughout the state of Michigan, I know you're going to do a great job, as you have here in the Department on Aging. And thank you for stepping up, and we're very proud of the appointment you received. Also, I'd just like to say, Kristen, I and Matt had, I think, the last formal Zoom meeting with the Spence Brothers team and Terry Tevis, who was helping design the animal shelter on the design phase of what will constitute the new shelter and provide services to all those families that have pets, as well as controlling diseases among our animal population in Bay County and the multitude of services that our Department of Animal Services and Adoption Services provides. And so I thought that meeting went well. And we're, we're getting to the point where we'll pretty soon have a nice look at what the new shelter will look like and what, how it will be so much better than the current shelter. And I think that's all Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner comments? I did want to recognize Beth, because I know that Beth Urick, I don't know if you want to say something about the Olympics that are just concluding and unfortunate, we were not able there to give out the awards. But we have Winter Olympics, too.
Yep. Thank you. Yeah, our Olympics went really well last week. Thank God the heat waited until this week and not last week for them. We had about 73 participants in our Olympic Games. We're growing again. COVID did us wrong in that, but we're, it's growing slowly. I'm really proud of our team of putting that together and everybody who participated. Right now, the, they just got done serving for our banquet, and they had already done the award ceremony. So I got a great team that stepped up and took care of all of that for me as well. Watch for us for, in October, for our Winter Games.
I'll sign up because they have card playing there and I can handle that.
Absolutely. I'm looking around here and seeing a lot of people who could play on those games.
We'll see all there. Any other commissioner?
I'm myself.
Commissioner comments? Last chance. Unfinished business? I don't have any. We do have new business. So I believe, let's do, let's do the easy one first. Let's do the election of a Sergeant-at-Arms for replacement for Mr. Poyer.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm looking for nominations from the floor. Okay. Any support for that? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sergeant-at-arms. You have to do a voice vote, vote call?
Call for three, then close the floor for nominations, ask for a motion for a unanimous appointment, and roll call it.
So I'll call the second time for nominations from the floor. I'll call the third time for nominations from the floor. Nominations are closed. I'm looking for a motion to pass the unanimous resolution.
A motion to pass unanimous resolution.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. So we have the appointment process that we need to discuss. We've been there, I've been through three of them. I know Tom's been through a few of them, and we've done them somewhat the same way, but not always the same. One of the questions, we have to do it within 30 days. So we're planning to do it the July 16th for a full board meeting to make the appointment. So we're looking to have people apply. They have to do an application process. Sometimes we've asked questions of the candidates, sometimes we haven't. So I know what the feeling, I know what the feeling of the board is. I personally think it's good to get a little feeling of the candidates, but we have to do it in a, in an open session. We have to ask them the same questions. So we've done that in the past. We've done it where we just voted like we did for the disposition. So, Mr. Herrick, you have any feeling on it? We've been through it a few times.
The, the few that I've been through, people just applied and looked at it and made the appointment, you know?
Yeah. And we leave it up to the commissioners to make, you know, to contact them or reach out to them.
It seemed like, it seemed like the easiest way to do it.
Yeah. It is a little easier process. I don't know, Colleen.
I'll concur with Tom because I was involved in both of those times. And for the appointment to the commission, it was just a vote of the commissioners. We submitted an application for the Register of Deeds. There was an interview process, but I don't think we need to do that for this.
Yeah. As for register deeds, we did that one, yeah. But for the other, other commissioner appointments, I know we've done just appoint them.
Right.
Yeah. So what's the feeling? Anybody have strong feelings for interviewing them?
As at Bangor Township, we were trustees. We had pretty much similar thing. What we did was had applicants and we asked three questions each, to each. We can ask questions regarding their stats on county business if we want. But the ones who ran, we asked them, you cannot be a candidate for the fall or the, or the election. You cannot be running for office if you want to fill this term. And the ones we appointed were not running. So I thought it'd be fair if we don't have anybody.
Have to ask, ask their legal opinion on that.
Just a point of order. You can't restrict someone from appointment, other than, the requirements to hold a position are the requirements to hold a position. You can decide not to vote for that person.
Okay.
Based on that, as a personal choice. But the commissioners can't state that someone cannot apply for the position if they're going to be running.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Vaughn, I think, having been through the process before, that it, it was, I think, better as a commissioner calling me individually to get my opinions on things, rather than to sit here and be questioned after question after question. I have some kind of special meeting for that. So we have the ability to do that, once we get the applications and prior to us voting, to contact whoever applies and get a feel for them. We don't have to go through an interview process ourselves to be, to apply, I mean, to run. So I don't think we need to put the candidates through either.
Are you recommending, are you recommend, oh, go ahead.
I know everybody's retired, but me.
That's okay, Amber.
I do want to mention that there are Open Meeting Act concerns if you are interviewing candidates for a position outside of an open meeting, even if it's just one commissioner. There are two cases. One is from the 1990s. It's Booth versus, I think, Detroit News. And there is another case that actually involves the City of Bay City where they were attempting to hire someone, and they had different representatives of the board interview candidates. And because it wasn't done in an open meeting, it was considered a violation of the Open Meetings Act. I'm not saying that there is a definitive law where it's going to come down either way, other than I know that this board has always tried to err on the side of open meetings. So I would suggest that you can put out an application and have people submit their answers in an application if there are certain questions that you want them to answer and you don't want to go through an interview process. Or you can have open interviews. But I would encourage commissioners not to contact applicants and have discussions on the side directly because it could potentially be considered a violation of the Open Meetings Act because it's an interview that is not open to the public.
So we could ask commissioners to submit questions that we can put on the application form, if you would like to do that.
Is there something pre-ranged on this? I mean, do you have like a questionnaire type of thing that went out? I mean, we've gone through this before.
So people put in, we have a standard application form that people can submit. We can also attach to that certain questions that they can submit with their application. The board needs to make a determination as to how many questions they want to ask and what those questions are. What you can do, without having to have another open meeting, so we don't violate any of those rules, is everyone can submit questions that they would like to ask. It can be submitted to the board coordinator. The board coordinator can send out that list of questions and ask everyone to choose, for instance, their top three. And then whatever three questions get the most vote. And then whatever three questions get the most votes would be the questions that are placed on the application. Everybody would be able to review those answers in writing before the date of appointment.
I like that.
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Remarried her.
That's why she works here.
Another issue, Mr. Chair, if I may, is how the Board chooses to vote for the candidate, if the Board is going to choose to have an unlimited number of forced-choice roll-call votes, which is what we did today for the appointment of the Library Board, or if the Board wants to utilize a ranked-choice voting system. You can also simply agree to go into the meeting with the understanding that you're going to do the forced-choice roll-call vote, and because there's six members, if you cannot reach a decision on the candidate, you can adjourn briefly, caucus, come back and decide whether or not you want to continue voting in that manner, if you want to switch over to ranked-choice voting, or if you want to call the vote and declare that you're incapable of noting a candidate. If that is the case, then this matter would have to go to a special election at the general election in November, so the person that would be replacing the current vacancy would be there from the date of certification of the vote in November, and they would serve out that term until December 31st. And then the person who was elected on the regular general ballot would take their position at the beginning of January.
Give me that, give me that part again, on the November election. Give me that.
If this Board is unable to appoint someone within 30 days, then the matter has to go to a special election. At that point in time, the earliest special election that we would be able to coordinate from the Clerk's Office would be the November election, where we're having our general election. So basically, this same, this position is going to have a temporary election for November and December of this year to fill out the current unexpired term, and then the regular candidates for the four-year term starting in January would also have to be voted on.
It wouldn't be the same person, right?
No, not necessarily.
I'm confused. I'm very confused on the part, I get the special election is, so it's two different elections, right?
Two different questions.
It's two different questions at the same election. It's on the same election date.
On the ballot, right?
So, Commissioner Herrick, potentially we could have a partial term for the 7th District and a term for the 7th District that begins 1/1/2025.
And that's two, both those questions would be on the same ballot?
Yes.
I got it, I got it. Okay, I'm good.
And could be some cause for confusion, as you can see.
It could be.
If we don't find somebody to, if we agree on somebody till July 16th.
Yeah, I understand. I got it now. I'm a little slow on uptake sometimes.
And then we have to decide on the date needed for the questions to be submitted, because we need to get our questions in, so.
So, can I have a question? Do we have two meetings in July?
No, one.
We have just one. Okay, so.
So July 10th?
Yeah, we want to give people time.
So we have to have it by then?
So we would need to get, I'd say we should do it within a week, so we can get a couple weeks to get them, amen.
What about Lindsey?
Week? Next week's.
Okay.
That's fine.
So do that, and then we'll plan on voting then, and then the decisions on ranked-choice versus forced voting. Now, we've also done forced voting, say there's three or four candidates, then somebody gets no votes or one vote, dropping that person off, off the election.
That's ranked, usually that's ranked choice, but yeah.
Okay, all right, so if they don't, if they don't get enough, or they get zero or one, whatever, then it would go off, okay.
Now, repeat that again.
So the ranked-choice one would be that if, say there's three candidates and two get, one gets four, one, or if one gets four, that would be a.
Three and two, three and three.
Yeah, then we, well, if we got, if we got two candidates and it's three, three, we keep voting until we decide what we're going to do, and from there.
Can I ask one more clarification question? So if somebody who is actually running in the election in the primary, can that candidate apply for this?
Yes.
And then go for the other one also? Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure.
And each individual Commissioner can make a decision as to whether or not you want to consider that candidate, because you don't think that that's a positive thing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, so we're ready to post the position here, so that will be going out, and the application is going to be due back by July 10th for the, for our vote on the 16th then.
16th.
Is this your 10th?
Questions, guys? Oh, yeah, there's an online source under Bay County Commission. You can do an online application or come up to the office here. We have the applications here, the office.
July 16th.
July 16th, okay.
So we made a decision? Are we good with ranked-choice voting, and then?
Yeah. We're fine.
But I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that the application can't go out until the questions come back, the deciding questions. So the earliest that that application would be posted, or the notice would be posted, would be Tuesday of next week. Earliest probably Wednesday of next week.
So Lindsey will email us all a copy of the questions, is that it? And then we can read?
Submit.
We have to turn them in, and then you're going to email, okay.
Any other questions on that? So I don't know if we need to vote on that.
So for, just if everyone is in agreement, the motion would be that there will be a notice posted with three questions, that the Board members are going to submit their questions to the Board Coordinator no later than Tuesday of next week. The Board Coordinator will, and rank their, the Board Coordinator will send them back out. Everyone will let her know what their top three are within one day. And at that point in time, she will post the vacancy. You will receive the applications and the questions, you will make a determination on the 16th, and at this point in time, it's my understanding that the Board is choosing forced, forced-choice ballot voting at this point in time.
So I'll move that, what she said.
Support?
Katie, you get that?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any other public inputs? Yeah, with other.
Hi, Caitlin Day again. I wanted to take the opportunity to sincerely thank you all, from all of us here who came to speak on behalf of Mr. Travis today, and I think today was a great example of civic engagement from our community and what the democratic process should look like. So I'm very grateful for your votes today, and I'm grateful that you let my kids be part of it. They had to leave for an important ice cream date, but I did text them the update, and the little one said, "Let's make some noise." So they were really happy with how everyone behaved tonight, so I just want to thank you all again, and it was a great experience for all of us who joined the meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Torres. I'm in Bay City, Michigan. This is my first time doing something like this, so this is kind of cool. I guess I wanted to say thank you to Chris for coming in and making sure that he makes sure that mental health is number one in the community. I've had my own battles with borderline personality disorder and trying to get the help that I needed and stuff, and so it's really important, I know how important it is, that we make sure that mental health is a very important aspect in the community so that people can get the help that they need. With my own struggles, it was really hard for me to get the help that I needed, and so I did a lot of suffering and stuff like that because of it, and so I appreciate you guys taking the time and the opportunity to do this. Thank you.
Any more public comment? I do notice Dennis Poirier's wife here, I know if she wants to speak or just say hi. She is here with us today. I know you're not a big public speaker. Bless your husband, let that up to your husband, right? Thank you.
I could, Vaughn. I just want to express our heartfelt condolences to you, Carol, and I've gotten to know Alex, and thank you for your comment today. He was the patriarch of an amazing family, and helped everybody, and, you know, donated so much of his time and personal resources, and we want you to know, we really are going to miss him, we miss him already. I know that he was very proud of Alex and his entire family. Alex, we talked about his continuing the sort of like family legacy of public service, and I know, you know, can experience what you're going through, because I lost my wife, and it's tough. But you're here, you know he was loved, and he's deeply missed already.
Thank you. Miscellaneous announcements, we have October, a land bank authority, one three-year term expiring. Bay County Department of Human Services, that's an at-large three-year term, Governor's Appointment. December, Bay County Veterans Repair Committee, one four-year term. And Department on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms expiring, districts two, four, and six, and one at large. We have need for a whole session.
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Vaughn, can I make one comment? I forgot. Just ahead of, sorry. Saturday is Great Lakes Pride Fest in Winona Park, and I believe it's 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM, so just want to make that aware, that's one on this weekend. 11 to 6, I just looked on the thing, it said 2 to, 7 to 2, 11 to 6.
7 to 2.
Yeah.
Skip over announcements.
Okay.
This weekend, Friday and Saturday, is the Pinconning Cheese Festival, so you get real
Head of motion, support, all those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.